Good afternoon and Happy New Year. We'll begin today's formal meeting with an invocation from Fire Captain Troy Holtorf.
Lord of Truth, you tell us that when we call to you, that you will answer. And you will tell us great and hidden things that we do not know. We call on you today, Lord. Lord, you tell us that if we look for you wholeheartedly, we will find you. Lord, help us to look for you with all our hearts. Lord, you tell us that if we lack wisdom to ask for it, knowing that you are a generous giver. Lord, we ask for wisdom today. We desperately need it. Lord, you tell us to wash our hands and to clean and to purify our hearts. Lord, we come now to you to be made clean and pure. Forgive us, Lord. Change us to be more like you. Lord, you tell us that you oppose the proud, but you give grace to the humble. Lord, we humble ourselves before you now, and we ask for help. Father, guide this meeting with a hand that is far more capable than ours, that is able to do more than we could ever ask or even imagine. We need your touch today. Touch those in this city who are sick, who are hurting, who are lonely, lost, down and out, who need your love and rescue, Father. Lord, come. Come and show your amazing grace to them and to us today. Help us to be your people on mission for you. We ask for your blessing and supernatural favor on today's meeting and agenda in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please remain standing. Councilwoman Ann O'Brien will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll now call to order the formal meeting of the Phoenix City Council for Wednesday, January 3rd. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Councilwoman Guadalupe. Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
Here.
Councilwoman O'Brien.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilman Robinson.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Waring.
Vice Mayor Ansari.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here.
Elsie Duarte and Mario Barajas are with us to provide Spanish interpretation. Would you please introduce yourselves?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Hello, my name is Mario Barajas, and together with my colleague Elsie Duarte, we'll be serving as today's interpreters for our city council formal meeting. I'll now take a moment to introduce ourselves to our Spanish-speaking audience. Hola buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Mario Barajas, y junto con mi colega Elsie Duarte, estaremos sirviéndoles hoy como intérpretes a los de habla hispana. Deseamos pedirles de antemano, si es que van a dar un comentario público, por favor, hable despacio, con claridad, y evite tener distracciones de fondo. Finalmente, pause después de cada una o dos oraciones para que le podamos interpretar de la manera más completa posible. Gracias. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Will the city clerk please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinances and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting, and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinances number G-7172, 7199, 7200, and 7207 through 7216, S-50441 through 50492, and resolutions 22170 and 22179 through 22181.
Thank you. Will the city attorney please explain the role of public comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Members of the public may speak for up to two minutes to comment on agenda items. Comments must be related to the agenda item and the action being considered by the council. General comments that go beyond the scope of the agenda item must be made in the citizen comment session at the end of the agenda. The city council and staff cannot discuss or comment on matters related to pending investigations, claims, or litigation. Additionally, any member of the public who appears before council in their capacity as a lobbyist must, as required by Phoenix City Code, disclose this fact before addressing council. The city code requires speakers to present their comments in a respectful and courteous manner. Profane language, threats, or personal attacks on members of the public, council members, or staff are not allowed. A person who violates these rules will lose the opportunity to continue to speak.
Thank you. Item one is meeting minutes. Councilman Waring.
Yes, Mayor, I move to approve the meeting minutes of March 3rd, 2021.
Second.
Way back machine.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item two, boards and commissions as revised. Vice Mayor.
Motion to approve mayor and city council boards and commissions nominations as revised.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Passes unanimously. Vice Mayor, do you have a comment?
Yep, I just wanted to give a quick shout-out to Ashton. He's with the Sunrise Movement on his appointment today. A very smart high school student. He's been working with my office, the mayor's office, and really focused on ensuring that young people's input is incorporated in the updates to our climate action plan. So I just wanted to give him a shout-out for being here, and congratulations.
Congratulations to Ashton and all of our new commissioners. If you could please come forward, we will conduct the swearing-in ceremony. Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
Aye.
And then repeat after me. Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of, and state your commission.
Of the office of the United States Valley Village Committee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you for serving our city. We are so excited to welcome our new commissioners. Thank you for advising the city and helping us be a better Phoenix. The city council will next turn to liquor license applications. We serve an advisory role to the state of Arizona. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve items three through 18.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Passes unanimously. City clerk, are we ready for ordinances? Resolutions, new business planning and zoning.
Yes, Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Motion to approve items 19 through 96, except the following: Items 24, 47, 62, 80, 90, 91, 92, 93, 94, and 95, noting that item 82 is being continued to January 24th, 2024. Item 83 is withdrawn. Item 85 is withdrawn. Items 93, 94, and 95 have additional information, and excluding these additional items for virtual public comment. 27, 44, 65, 73, and 96. And can the clerk confirm if there are any other items that should be excluded for in-person public comment?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, no other items to exclude.
Right.
Second.
We have a motion from the Vice Mayor, a second from Councilwoman Stark. Any comments? Roll call.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
We next move to item 24, which is a selection of the Vice Mayor. Before we, I will turn to Councilwoman O'Brien for a motion on this one. I want to recognize Vice Mayor Ansari for her diligent work in this role over the last year, stepping up in more than just procedural ways. She has helped us become a better city. She continues to shed light on important issues such as climate action. Together, we have gotten guns off the street in Phoenix, ended income discrimination for renters, responded to the homelessness crisis, worked to address extreme heat, and much more. Vice Mayor Ansari has had a strong and consistent presence at community events, from Levine to downtown, and has partnered with organizations, including Mercy Care, to bring her district together in fun, creative ways. Want to thank you for your impactful tenure. Keep up the great work. Any other comments?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you. I feel kind of proud that I made the motion to make you Vice Mayor, right? And I know you work extremely hard in your district, and so you took on this additional work, and you did it quite well. I really do admire your focus on very important issues in the city, and you really carried those forward as Vice Mayor, most notably affordable housing and helping with our trying to combat homelessness. I know you've been passionate about those issues, and I appreciate that you were a leader in those issues. I think you did a fine job, and I thank you for your service.
Councilwoman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Vice Mayor Ansari for all of her additional work this last year. She does already do a ton of work in her district, and on behalf of the entire city. She's very passionate about the issues that are near and dear to her heart and to the city, so thank you.
Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
I'll, I'm sorry, I didn't have the pleasure of serving your entire term as Vice Mayor, but it's been my pleasure to serve in that capacity, to see you serve in that capacity, especially in the Levine area. You've made it a point to coordinate when appropriate in D8 and D7 in our Levine Quarterly, our pilot for 51st Avenue and Baseline, as well as the 35th Avenue and Caesar Chavez and Turkey Trot. I know it's been a labor of love. I can tell on your perspective. I just want to say thank you for your service, and thank you.
Thank you.
I also want to say, also, in addition to your other capacities, we also had the pleasure of working together to support the Go Bond, and I appreciate all of the efforts that you did in that component as well, so thank you.
Councilwoman Pastor.
I'd just like to thank you for your work, not only in your district, well, mainly in your, and some of it throughout the city, and appreciate what you have done, especially incorporating the youth into decision-making capacities, so thank you.
I think we are ready for a motion. Councilwoman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move Councilwoman Stark for Vice Mayor. I'd like to just say that from the beginning, she has been a mentor, and I really appreciate all the hard work she does in her district as well. We share a boundary and have worked hard on a couple of issues, so I enjoy seeing her at Coffee with the Cop and community events and tackling all those difficult issues with her at my side, so thank you, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Council, Vice, Vice Mayor Ansari.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for the nice comments. It's truly been an honor to serve Phoenix as Vice Mayor for 2023. 2023 brought a lot of positive news for Phoenix. We passed very well-deserved raises for our city employees. We banned source and income discrimination for renters. We passed a $500 million bond program with critical investments across our city, legalized casitas citywide, ordered our first electric buses, and a lot, lot more. More importantly, and I think most importantly, we took very decisive action to engage the 800 residents who were living outside of the zone. We worked to get them into safer shelter, and the statistic that I really want to emphasize is that 69% of those individuals are still in shelter, and 7% are in permanent housing. Our work is far from over on this issue, but this was a critical step, and we accomplished our goal in a very strategic, humane, and collaborative way. It's also been one of the few times on council I felt where every single one of us came together and really agreed on the direction that we should go in, and that was really great to be a part of. Another area that I focused on was extreme heat. We, along with the rest of the world, of course, broke heat records, and all eyes were on Phoenix. We were in the national news every day. I'm sure everyone got texts and calls from friends and family across the country about whether Phoenix was going to be livable, and sometimes that was scary, and sometimes maybe even felt a little dramatic. But every year, we've worked to improve our city's response to this critical issue. We have the first publicly-funded Office of Heat Response and Mitigation in the United States, and that office is growing every year, doing critical work to make sure that we are doing everything in our power to respond, mitigate, and adapt to the threat of extreme heat. The number of heat-related deaths in the city and the county are unacceptable, but I'm very optimistic that Phoenix will be the city to learn to solve this issue once and for all, and I'm very much looking forward to our February policy update on this matter. Thank you again for this opportunity, and I'm very excited to work with our new Vice Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, in the coming year. Thank you.
Any other comments? I am very excited to move forward with nominating Councilwoman Stark as Vice Mayor. She is no stranger to the city council or to the city. She's a dedicated, diligent public servant, and she's going to be a great Vice Mayor. I look forward to working alongside you to tackle tough challenges and celebrate success. As our former Planning and Development Director, she has taken on so many challenges, including improving our processes in that area and speeding up timelines for important projects, including affordable housing. She's also been a great leader on public safety and making sure we have the best, safest transportation system. I'm excited to keep working with you now as our Vice Mayor to ensure Phoenix remains the best city in the country, so thank you. Any, Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
Yes, I also am looking forward to seeing Vice Mayor Stark move into that role. She has been, from the time I've been on council, she has done nothing but welcomed me with open arms, always community-oriented and quick to help, which I think are skill sets that the Vice Mayor fills in greatly. So thank you. I look forward to your support. Thank you for considering this. Thank you for all that you do, Councilwoman Stark, and your ability to bring everyone together.
And Councilwoman Ansari will remain as our Vice Mayor for the duration of this meeting. When we convene next week, Vice Mayor Stark will help. All right, and Denise, does this need a roll call? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Congratulations. Deborah Stark, you have been elected Vice Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for your continued service and for all the work you have done this year. We next go on to Agenda Item 27, the acquisition of easements. We next go on to Item 27, acquisition of easements. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve item 27.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Jeff Caldwell. Jeff Caldwell. He's not on? Okay. Roll call.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark. Waring. Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Item 44 is an agreement with Squire Patton Boggs. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve item 44.
Second.
Do we have any speakers online for this item? Do not. Roll call.
Guadalupe, oh, sorry. Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark. Waring. Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Item 47 is a request authorization to enter into a contract with the Southwest Center for HIV/AIDS. Vice Mayor.
Move to approve item 47.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Vice Mayor for comments.
Thank you. Very excited about this item. The Southwest Center does incredible work in District 7 and across the city. They provide mental and physical health services for our LGBTQIA+ community, and this fund will specifically help provide services for patients who lack health insurance and are unable to pay out of pocket. This community, especially our trans constituents, often don't have access to quality, affordable health services and often need specialized support. The Southwest Center and this $1 million ARPA grant from the city will help close that gap, and I'm very proud to support the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
Item 62 is acquisition of real property for Hawk Crossings. Vice Mayor.
Move to approve item 62.
Second.
Motion and a second. Vice Mayor.
More positive comments. This particular item is about pedestrian safety, which is clearly so important to our residents, and adding these hawk signals will add more safe areas for people to be able to get where they are going. The hawk signals in District 7 in this item are by the Jack L. Cuban Elementary School, where many of the students nearby walk to school. Many of the streets they cross have large gaps between the crosswalks on wide streets that are frequented by semis and industrial traffic, which is the surrounding area. Kids from the Homedale neighborhood will now have a safe crossing on 35th Avenue, something that they have been asking for for years. So I just wanted to shout this item out. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you for your work to make sure we have safer crossings. Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm too very excited about this item, and a big supporter of Safe Streets. And I'm very excited to see that a hawk will be going up by Park Terrace, a retirement community along Greenway that's been asking for one for a number of years, and I know they're celebrating today, so I'm happy that I'm going to support this.
Wonderful. Roll call.
Hodge Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
We next go to Item 65, the Parks Master Plan Planning Services Contract. Vice Mayor.
Move to approve item 65.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have four public comments. We'll go first to virtual. We still do not have Jeff Caldwell. We will go to Michael Norton, and then we'll be followed in person by Jerry Van Gass. We don't have audio? Okay. Jerry will be next, followed by Tim.
Happy New Year, Jerry Van Gass. I have a handout here. This is in regards to a new city parks master plan. We want it tabled right now. We were at the, here we go. At the November, and it's on video, in front of the Parks Subcommittee, we were told that this was going to be, that it was, Cynthia was directed, Director Cynthia, and she stated, we said, "Where, what is this going to cost?" Couldn't come up with an exact cost. Said contracts were still being finalized, and yet they had somebody already with a website. Five months had been out there collecting input from the citizens, had done a video, and I know this wasn't done pro bono. And when asked what the funding source was, she said 3PI. So here they are now. We have record requests out from our attorneys at the Center for Law and Public Interest that have not even been acknowledged. This is seven weeks. We have a legal opinion that we asked for, the city attorney, and nothing has been provided. This is, you know, we're not going to go through another year of lies from the Parks Department. We're tired of it. They have, it's not an option to provide record requests to our attorneys. We want those, and we want a legal opinion, and we want this tabled now. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear from Tim, and then we'll have council comments.
Good afternoon, Tim Surakowski. Happy New Year to all. I'm the individual who at that November meeting asked for a legal opinion. To date, we have not received a legal opinion of usage of 3PI. Once again, I am asking for a legal opinion from your legal department to explain to us exactly what they think that 3PI money can be used for. I understand that there's $120 million there, and I understand that usages can be usages. But I think there needs to be this year a clear understanding of exactly what this money can be used for. I think the money's been used properly in most instances, but I don't believe it's been used properly in some of the other ways that it should have been used. So once again, I'm asking for a legal opinion so that we can all understand exactly what this money can be used for. Secondly, I'd like a full accounting of this money. I want to know if this money consequently has been co-mixed with the City of Phoenix money, because this is an initiative fund. It has to be, remain independent. I want to know if this money was used to increase your bond rating for the City of Phoenix, because $120 million would truly increase the bond rating if they knew you had cash money there. So I think all these different items should be addressed at the present time, and I think the public needs to at this point, since they are being taxed on this money, that they should have the right to know exactly where this money is. More importantly is, I think we should set up a website for 3PI money and show monthly exactly where all the money is being spent so that we know clearly that it's being used correctly. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. We'll go to Councilwoman Pastor.
I would actually like to make a motion to continue this until we get clarity. I sit on that committee, and that was asked for. I guess my question is to legal about public records requests, because public records requests continue to be popping up here. And what is the process in public records requests? Because I can't remember what department. I think it was Transportation, Streets and Transportation, that said that they weren't required to give public records requests, and in all reality, they were. So I would like to know what departments are exempt from public records requests.
So Mayor and Council, the city has several different departments that respond to public records requests. Each department has a public information officer, and we also have through the communications office, if it's multiple departments that are being requested. So each time that a public records request comes in, then of course, we evaluate what we can release, what we have, and if necessary, it's reviewed by the Law Department for any personal identifying information or information that cannot be released for attorney-client.
Okay, so then my understanding is every department, when there's a public records request, they are required to go through the process?
Yes, Mayor and Council, that's correct.
Okay. That's one of the reasons why I'm making the motion.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you. I'm assuming we wouldn't have this on our agenda if you hadn't fully vetted it with regards to 3PI, correct?
So Mayor and Council, as council knows, we cannot respond directly to public requests for legal advice or our legal opinion. for legal advice or our legal opinion. However, when requested, then we do give that opinion to the city departments in response to any of those legal issues that come up. And so we have conferred with the Parks Department in regards to those types of questions.
And maybe this is a question more for Cynthia, but I think we have a three PI Oversight Committee that audits three PI every year as part of the process. So would they have been involved in this anyway? Would they have vetted this issue as well?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Councilwoman Stark, yes, you are correct. So we have a Phoenix Parks Preserve Initiative three PI Fund Committee who meets annually, and we have a third-party audit that's conducted on how we use the three PI funds. That committee is charged with reviewing the audit reports and deeming that it's valid and that those funds are used appropriately. In regards to the legal interpretation, we did consult with the law department, who has given us the interpretation verbally that they have reviewed this and that we can use three PI funding to fund the Parks Master Plan. And I know that that public records request is in progress. We, the department ourselves, don't manage that request, but I know that that review is in progress and an interpretation is pending.
Thank you. And Mayor, and Jerry is a constituent of mine, but I also have a lot of other constituents that are very anxious to see this master plan process move forward, and I think it will help us in the future as we look at how we expend our monies, as well as ensuring that we're equitable amongst all the districts. And so I, I think we should move forward. I respect what you're saying, Laura. I get it, but I think we've got a lot of people out there anxious for this process to start. If I recall, it was a previous Subcommittee that was chaired by Betty, and quite frankly, she was asking for it back then. So it's been quite a while that we've been trying to pursue this. So I would like to move forward with it. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pastor.
So I will, well, I didn't get a second on my motion, but that's okay, because I'm going to take my motion back. I'm trying to get the proper term. Resend my motion. But in the motion to move this forward, I would like all those items to be given, all the requests that were requested and what we are allowed to do, be given to those that have requested it. Is the three PI committee, all those documentation, everything they review, is that, that is public record?
Mayor, Council, and Councilwoman Pastor, everything is public record. Yes.
Okay. Is that on our website so that then citizens can go to the three PI Committee and grab the discussions, the financials, everything that is, that is discussed in that committee?
Councilwoman Pastor, I don't know that everything is on the website, but we can certainly make sure that the audit and the report and the results is on the website for review.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if your microphone is on, but we'll recognize the city manager.
Excuse me? Oh, there it is. Light was on, but it wasn't working. So in regards to some of the requests, I just wanted to add additional context. The Parks and Preserve Fund, three PI, is also a part of the annual comprehensive financial report as well. So it is also looked at from the finance perspective and an independent external auditor, and the expenditures are also a part of the city checkbook. So if anyone wanted to actually see what is being expended against the three PI fund, it is available through the city's checkbook, which is available online to all residents.
Thank you. And city manager, would it be fair to say this is a relatively small amount of the fund to do long-term planning?
It is, Mayor. And if you, if you recall, that fund was initially, the Parks Preserve Fund was initially passed by voters in nineteen ninety-nine. It was reauthorized, I believe, in two thousand and eight, and it is for the acquisition of land in the Sonoran Preserve, and it's also for the development of additional parks. So I think this is definitely in line with what that initiative was intending to do.
I am certainly excited for this plan to move forward. I think there's things like looking at our recreation strategies and water conservation, where it's really great to have a citywide conversation. I always learn things, and I suspect they will, will get feedback that'll really help us do better. Unfortunately, we also do need to look at things like crime prevention through environmental design, and there is a lot of innovation in that area as well that can help us. I've talked about in the past, I'm also looking forward to making a priority to do a real plan for the capital investment on vacant land that we own and make sure that we have a great conversation with our community and get moving on many projects in that area. So I think this will be a valuable process. It is relatively a small expenditure compared to the magnitude of Parks and Preserve Initiative. As someone who once worked in strategic planning, I do think stepping back and taking a big picture can really help you use the resources that you have most effectively. So Cynthia, thanks to you and the Parks Board for your leadership in this area. I cannot wait to see what we learn and how we improve our already great system. Councilwoman, yeah, so we, did you make a motion? Okay, okay, so.
I made the original motion.
Okay. So there is a motion for approval. All right. Any, so the motion is to approve, and we have a second. Does anyone else have a comment? Councilwoman Waring.
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly echo your comments. I mean, this is, I think, a necessary step to make sure we don't waste money on stuff people don't want, if I had to sum it up. As some, who has had the opportunity, I guess I'll put it that way, to appoint people to help plan individual parks, I guess I would say, if you're listening to this right now and you're interested in parks, this is a great opportunity to weigh in about what amenities you would like. We don't want to build stuff you don't want to use. We want to build stuff that's going to get the most use. Conversely, if either you're weighing in or you're part of a committee or something, if you don't get a hundred percent of what you want, that doesn't mean the process is horrible, terrible, tear it all up, you should have given me everything I wanted. All I would ask is, you've got an opportunity to weigh in, take advantage of it right now. Cynthia, you and I have had, I don't know how many discussions with how many constituents about this very thing, in part in preparation for this process that we're going to be starting to engage in right now. And so I'm glad that you're doing it to echo the Mayor's comments, and I think it's needed, and looking forward to the results. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman, Councilwoman O'Brien.
Yes. Cynthia, how many parks do we have in the City of Phoenix?
Mayor, Councilwoman O'Brien, we have a hundred and eighty-six.
A hundred and eighty-six parks. And in addition to that, I know that I have a large swath of land that used to be a landfill in my area that was promised to be a park a long time ago. And so I think for that reason, in addition to the many reasons that have been named prior to my comments, that is another reason I'm excited to support this, because it's time for us to have that master plan and know what is going to be happening in the coming years so that our residents can know what kind of assets they'll have. So thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Hodge, Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson. Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Item seventy-three is GIS files for water users. Do we motion?
Motion to approve item seventy-three. Second.
Motion and a second. We do not have any members of the public online. Wonderful. This is an important item that will help us do the best planning for our water department. Roll call.
Hodge, Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson. Stark. Waring. Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
We next move to item eighty, which is retroactive approval to apply for the Arizona State Parks and Trails Historic Preservation Heritage Grant Fund. Vice Mayor.
Move to approve item eighty.
We have a motion and a second. I'll turn to the Vice Mayor for comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the last few years, there has been a lot of anxiety in the downtown and historic preservation communities about the fate of the Sergeant Old Dicker House, and I'm so pleased to say that there is now a developer attached to the project who has taken on the very important responsibility of moving it to the corner of the lot, rehabilitating it, and bringing another great restaurant to downtown Phoenix. This is no small feat. Moving a one-hundred-ten-year-old house is not easy and costs a significant amount of money. Lesser developers would have demolished it to make room for a high-rise, but this one is incorporating it into their housing project. This is a big win for downtown, downtown Phoenix and District Seven, and I'm really proud to support this grant. Thank you.
Thank you. There's been a lot of advocates who've been working hard on this, including members of the family who originally built it and former leaders of the city. It's exciting that one of the funding sources will also be the Phil Gordon threatened building grants. We have several former mayors of the city who are very passionate about this project and historic preservation. Roll call.
Hodge, Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring. Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
We next go to items ninety and ninety-one. They are related items. We will have two votes and one public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. We do not have any members of the public to comment, so I will close the public hearing for ninety and ninety-one, and turn to Councilwoman Waring for a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to approve the item per the Planning Commission recommendation and adopt the related resolution.
Second.
Okay. Denise has pointed out to me, we do have a representative for the applicant here. Do you need to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, my name is Michelle Green. I'm with Lazarus and Sylvan. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
I think Madam Chair Larry was unable to be here today, maybe, so.
Very understandable.
I thought you were just pleased with my motion, that face you were making. I was glad it wasn't me.
It was an excellent motion. I look forward to just voting in favor of it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do you want any additional comments? Roll call.
Hodge, Washington. O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Uh, yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark. Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Woo-hoo.
Councilwoman Waring, for ninety-one, do you have another excellent motion for us?
I do. A motion to approve for the Planning Commission recommendation and adopt the related ordinance.
Second.
May I just say one thing?
Please.
Yeah, so like I said, Larry couldn't be here today. This, this project was a long time coming. It's a very active neighborhood. They are terrific about providing feedback and so forth. Larry worked with them for years, and then the project, I think, that was planned for the spot, didn't wind up getting funding and so forth. So he had to start all over again and did it again, but I really appreciate his work with this neighborhood. They have very definitive needs and wants, and I believe the fact that nobody is here today really speaks volumes to the good work he did on this. So I just wanted to say thank you for this, because this could have been extremely controversial and wound up not being extremely controversial. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Roll call.
Hodge, Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Ansari.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Items ninety-two and ninety-three are related items. We will have two votes, but one public hearing. We will open public hearing. We'll begin with in-person Mark Cardenas, followed by Greg Best. Mark is, Mark didn't support, and that is all he needs. Greg Best, followed by Moussa Salahie.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilpeople. I'm Greg Best. I live in the area. I met you, the mayor, at the Salt River Flats groundbreaking. That was one of my properties that we allowed the city to do affordable housing on. Recently, we sold another property, the Dahlia Village. We sold that for affordable housing in that area. I gave, I had the renters that had to be relocated so you could do the Dahlia Village, and they all received money to be relocated, and it was a nice transition. Now we're across the street with twenty-eight acres R4 that we need affordable housing. I sent everybody an email, I don't know if you've got it, with the median homes, house prices at five-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand. It's too much for that type of neighborhood, but they want to put warehouses in R4 property, twenty-eight acres of R4. The city, I know you guys have been fighting to do the best you could do to get people located in something they can afford, and you have the golden opportunity here to turn down warehouses that are not needed, to allow for a whole subdivision to be built at a price range that people in the neighborhood or people that you're trying to locate could afford. And I gave you that email, but what's important is, since you're aware that I sold the properties for those two huge affordable housing apartment complexes, I owned, I got support letters with people that say they're from my house, okay? So if you look at these form letters that you received from Trammell Crow, there's a support for Michael Tapoya. He says he lived at thirty-six-twenty-two, my office, okay? He'd never lived in my office. Then you've got an Andrea Espinoza, Audrey Espinoza, again, thirty-six-twenty-two. All the tenants that I had relocated, all received financial aid to be relocated. Neither of these people ever lived there, nor did they receive the aid that's of record. Some of them received up to a hundred thousand dollars to move. They received more money than they ever paid me in rent, but they were taken care of to get this project in. So these form letters that you received in support, I can tell you right now, they're not true, okay? I can also tell you, I was offered a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for my vote. I didn't take it, okay? I didn't take it to be in support of it, because you need affordable housing. You don't need warehouses. So I saw somewhere, you guys said you were investigating something. If you're investigating, we can definitely investigate that side of it. So I would ask that you stick with the plan that you, that you've been trying to fulfill, which is good.
Yep, thank you. Unfortunately, we've given everyone two minutes. So Moussa, I apologize for my pronunciation, is next, and then we will have, for virtual testimony, we will have Guadalupe Gonzalez.
Good afternoon. My name is Moussa Salahie. I own a property just south of the twenty-eight, twenty-eight acre they're trying to rezone. The area need affordable housing, and it's coming. We got like a hundred and twenty and plus another hundred and twenty in the area that got built in the past twenty-four months. It's moving north where people are building on the empty lots. The, the building, commercial property next to residential and having thirty feet or forty feet building, it will disturb the neighborhood, having a team wheeler going in and out in the neighborhood. Also, just for your information, today or yesterday, I was, I get emails from real estate agent. I'm very active of own property, buying and selling. The property that right now exists next to this twenty-eight acre is up for sale. It's already commercial. The motorcycle, I don't want to call it junkyard, but it's up for sale. That could be perfect. It's already zoned, commercial. Why do we need to go to the R4, change it to commercial if the other one is available for sale? That's all I have to say.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We will go to virtual testimony now with Guadalupe Gonzalez, followed by Marsha Bushing.
Yeah, my name is Guadalupe Gonzalez. I'm a business owner. My address is thirty-eight oh eight, South Twelfth Street. I live across the property lot, and I have spoken before with the commission, and I bought my property from the City of Phoenix ten, fifteen years ago, and I have seen this property empty. Along with some of my neighbors, we have helped with some of the cleanup with my own resources to keep this area clean. So we have seen a development in the past that didn't get developed, and so we are happy to see that there's a developer again willing to develop a business park in the area, and so I would hope that the city council would support the project. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go next to Marsha.
My name is Marsha, Mayor and City Council. My name is Marsha Bushing, and I'm a member of the Southern Village Planning Committee, as well as the City of Phoenix Planning as well as the City of Phoenix Planning Commission. Reluctantly, I come before you today, and I only come before you because, as the prior speaker has said, our city is in great need of housing. This is twenty-eight acres of already zoned R4 property as well as general plan, multifamily property, ten to fifteen dwelling units per acre, and we don't see as a village any reason to change the, change it from the multifamily zoning. There was discussion when it was sent back to the village at the last village meeting to actually have a multi-use, and I think that's an excellent alternative to have a portion of this huge twenty-eight acre parcel be possibly commerce park and the balance be multifamily, but there's no reason that we need to put twenty-eight acres of commerce park in this location when there's multifamily going in all around it. There's been some discussion about the A1 property to the east and northeast and how that would create a detriment, and I think the idea of creating two types of property, two types of zoning on this property would make it usable in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go next to Edgar, followed by Marcelino Quinones. State Representative? Okay, so we have lost, do we have any beyond the applicant? Representative Quinones, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Gallego. Hello, Phoenix, city council members. This is Marcelino Quinones. My address is twenty-one nineteen West Burgess Lane, Phoenix, Arizona, eight-five-zero-four-one. And in addition to calling South Mountain Home, I also have the distinct honor of representing the district at the Capitol. So I'm calling as a neighbor today to advocate for this project. The land has been vacant for a number of years, and as you've heard from other neighbors, this could provide an opportunity to create parks, walking areas, trees, shade, and improve our dashboard. So I would, I'm calling to support this project. I also believe that it would bring in a number of jobs, which always benefits all of our cities, and so I'm calling in support of this project. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Representative. Appreciate your service. To our team, do we have any beyond the applicant, any speakers waiting? All right, we will ask the representative for the applicant to come forward, and I'll recognize Councilwoman Hodge, Washington, who I believe has some questions.
Thank you, Mayor, council. My name is Jason Morris, with you, Morris Baugh, twenty-five twenty-five East Arizona, Biltmore Circle in Phoenix. I'd be happy to make a presentation. I'd be happy to save you from the presentation, if you'd prefer. I'd also be happy to just to address some of the comments that we've heard from those in opposition, but I'm also open for any questions that may be out there that I'm, the floor is yours.
I'll ask you, because I was going to ask you to address some of the opposition, so I'll let you take a stab at it, and then I'll fill in the blanks.
I appreciate that, Mayor, councilmember. My office has likely done more multifamily work in District Eight than most, if not all, of the other consultants with work within this city. Knowing that, and knowing that the applicant in this particular application is a multifamily developer, seeing an R4 property of this size, and I should point out that this is an assemblage of property, so it took some time to create the twenty-eight acres that we're discussing, it is absolutely available as R4 property and has been for now decades and has gone undeveloped in the biggest housing boom, particularly for multifamily, that the city has ever seen and I've ever seen in my career. That being said, there is a reason this applicant did not proceed with a multifamily application despite the fact that the property is already zoned. And no developer seeks to hire the likes of me and go through this process, because it is the least effective, least efficient, least profitable way to move forward with development. But in this instance, and I know you're all aware of the exhibits that are associated with this property, we are immediately adjacent to the most intensive industrial zoning that the City of Phoenix permits, literally car shredders, waste management's transfer station, a recycling center, twenty-four-hour operations, which are not only bad neighbors for residential, but have stopped the ability of this property to be developed and to be financed as a residential property. Instead, what this application offers is an opportunity for residential in the proximate area without having the immediate neighbor, having some buffer, and that's what this property represents. It is the buffer to those uses. If developed successfully, and in this instance, Trammell Crowe is a nationally-recognized developer that is bringing a lead silver project, and I say that because it represents less than one-half of one percent of all of the industrial projects that have been developed in this state are developed to that sustainability and standard. Lead silver is a significant investment, but it's also a commitment to this site, and it's a commitment to improve what's there, because as it stands now, this property has not and will not, and I want, if nothing else, to make this point, which is, I understand the impetus from the village, and I have nothing but respect, we heard from the vice-chair of the village today, and it would be wonderful if their contention that by getting rid of this application, you would see housing develop on this property. But if that were true, it would have happened in the thirty years that this property has been sitting, available with R4 zoning. And I know from my development experience, my client's development experience, and my clientele, this property will not be developed as residential, so it is not as though it's being taken out of residential production. Instead, one of the comments that was made, and this actually came because of our revisit with the village after the vote, so more recently, within the last month, there was a conversation about the opportunity for mixed use on this property, if not just a business park. So we discussed that as a development team, and one of the things that we've done and you've seen in the changed plan was, we have now put some of our amenities, some of our open space, some of our walking paths closer to the residential that's being developed by Ulysses Development to our south, and they are also our neighbor to our west. And I'll point out, because their letter really accurately describes the reason for their support, and that is, our development of this site is the key to success for their site. It acts as a buffer, and now with the development of that property to the south and a potential for the shared amenities, the active and passive walking areas in the park, it does act as a mixed use. But in terms of this property by itself being that mixed use, because of its poor access, we have no ability to go to the east, and we have no ability to go to the north, which is unusual for a property, but it's bound by an SRP dry canal bed. So we have no access to the roadway system except to Twelfth Street and a very limited vehicular access only to Jones. So we can't do a true mixed use. It's an inappropriate use as mixed use. It's an impossible use, if we're honest with ourselves, about residential on this property. But instead, this can be a catalyst to good development surrounding it, because there hasn't been good development in this area, on this spot. That was a very long answer. Thanks for your indulgence.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. You were talking, some of the issues that were raised by some members of our community here. One of those comments was potential of eighteen-wheelers in and out of their, in and out of the projects and into their adjacent neighborhood. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Absolutely. Mayor, councilmember, we have designed this property specifically so that, first of all, I should preface this by saying, with the existing zoning, there would actually be, I believe, a seventy-eight percent increase in traffic if we talked about this being utilized as R4 property. So with the rezone, there's a significant reduction in overall traffic. But more specific to our design of this property, it's been designed so that Jones Street, which is our southern boundary, is for vehicles only, passenger vehicles only, so cars essentially. All of the larger traffic, and this will not generate a significant amount of eighteen-wheel traffic, but we would expect as a business park that it's likely to see ten-wheel trucks and that type of use. All of that is directed to Twelfth Street and Twelfth Street then north, which would connect to either the ten or the seventeen, not south.
And in this project is in relation, can you talk to us about how it's in relation to Arizona Fresh's proximity?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmember. Arizona Fresh, that this council worked a tremendous amount of time on to bring to reality, is an A1 and A2 industrial park immediately across the street from the proposed site. Our buildings are typically smaller than the Arizona Fresh development, but together they work, because our site actually permits an open space that then connects immediately across the street to their park system and their path system that takes you out to the Rio Salado.
I'm going to jump around a little bit. I want to make sure the members of the community understand that I hear their concerns, and I am trying my best to get the best information. There were some suggestions that some of the form letters that, sorry, some of the support letters were more form letters, and the information was inaccurate. Can you tell me about your process in generating those or in acquiring the support letters?
Thank you, Mayor, councilmember. I appreciate your reminding me of that. In fact, the individuals that were mentioned by Mr. Best are tenants in the building. They are the closest residents who were home when we were doing one of our seven community outreach sweeps in the neighborhood. They are, in fact, residents in that building. They had told us that they weren't sure how much longer they would like, they would be able to be residents in that area, but they were residents, and we have affidavits that they are residents of that building and lived in that building. More importantly, we have eighty letters, over eighty letters, of support from surrounding businesses and property owners. What was most interesting is the amount of support we got from the existing A1 and A2 buildings and those businesses, because frankly, they're not leaving. They have outdoor storage, it's the largest outdoor storage yards in this part of the city. It's fenced with metal siding, and because their operations are often twenty-four hours a day, they supported this use because their fear was somebody trying to build residences that close to their operations, because they don't want to be forced out, because they have nowhere else to go. There aren't other options for outdoor storage and shredding in this type of intense use. So much of our support came from those. I'd be happy to get anyone in contact with our outreach consultant. We did two neighborhood meetings, a virtual neighborhood meetings, and seven sweeps of the neighborhood on foot, so that we would get that input, because the South Mountain Village expects that level of participation.
Concludes my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Stark?
Thank you. I know this is a case to struggle with, but I'm looking at the aerial. I would tend to say it's nice to have a buffer, because the uses to the north and to the east are pretty intense. And while we need affordable housing, I'm not sure it's fair to put them next to a junkyard and a shredding use. I mean, that's tough on anybody. And it appears that there's some R4 to the south, so maybe I'll turn to the staff. Was that your thinking, was that would provide a buffer, because there's a, to the south of their proposal is zoning that could then become multifamily and perhaps affordable housing?
Mayor, members of the council, that's a correct assessment of staff's evaluation of their request. The proposed zoning, coupled with the required setbacks that are stipulated as part of their request, provide an adequate buffer from the existing A1 uses to the northeast.
I appreciate that, and I understand the struggle you're going through, Councilwoman, because we really want a champion of affordable housing, but I am having concerns seeing, looking at this aerial, it's pretty telling of what's adjacent to it, so. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. If no other questions, we do have two more virtual speakers. We will go first to Jacob Evanson and then Gabby Diaz.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Jacob Evanson. Our business is The Boilermakers Local Six Twenty-Seven, located at twenty-three forty-five West Thomas Road, Phoenix, Arizona. We are in support of the project. I mean, it just seems like the area that the project is in, I mean, it's been vacant for a while, and we'd like to see better improvements brought to the area. It does have good jobs that would be along with the development of the project, and the design of the project will develop on other properties and other areas, so we're definitely for the project to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker will be Gabby.
Hi, my name is Gabby Diaz. I am a current homeowner. I live at one zero two four East Jones Ave in Phoenix. I am just on the call here, just to let you know that I am supportive of the project. I am the current homeowner and have been here for over ten years, and I'm excited to see what business park can grow here for our community.
Thank you for your testimony. To our team, is that all the speakers? Great. We'll close the public hearing. We will first have a motion on item ninety-two and then a separate motion on item ninety-three. This is in District Eight, so I'll turn to Councilwoman Hodge, Washington. Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve, per the December twenty-ninth memo of the Planning Director, with a modification to stipulation number four as follows, that the maximum building height shall be thirty feet or forty-two feet if the applicant enters into an agreement with the City of Phoenix where the developer makes a single two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand contribution to the City of Phoenix Housing Trust Fund to provide improvements and incentive housing development within the five-mile radius of that site.
Mayor, if I may?
Right, is that the motion for ninety-three?
That's, that should be, that would be a motion for the zoning case. The general plan amendment would be, per the Planning Commission recommendation and adopt of the related resolution.
My apologies. Thank you for the clarification. I move that we adopt the, sorry, to approve per the December twenty-ninth memo from the Planning Director and the related ordinance. Oh, I'm sorry. One second. I'll get it right. I will get it right. Here it is. Thank you. Motion to approve for the Planning Commission's recommendation and adopt the related ordinance.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Thank you. And, Councilwoman, thank you. You've spent a lot of time on this. I know you are very passionate about the topics that we've discussed today. Appreciate the hard work on this.
Mayor, if, one slight correction, Councilwoman, is it's moved to approve per the Planning Commission recommendation and adopt the related resolution for the general plan amendment.
Did I not say that?
You said, you said ordinance. Ordinance would be for ninety-three.
I'm sorry. I read it incorrectly. Twenty-twenty-four is giving me a little struggle. Okay, let's start it over. Motion to approve for the Planning Commission recommendation and adopt the related resolution.
Thank you.
Second?
Second from Councilwoman Stark. Roll call.
Hodge, Washington?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Item ninety-three.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I add a little comment before I make my motion? Is, I want to make sure that my village planning commission understands that I recognize the need for affordable housing in our area, but I do not believe that affordable housing means that they should get the less desirable locations, and this is generally not the type of location where many people would want to live directly in the most intensive industry. where many people would want to live directly in the most intensive industrial project. So my recommend, my motion is to address that issue and make sure we have additional funds in our district to provide for affordable housing projects that are more palatable. So I will go ahead and make my motion appropriately this time is I move to approve for the December 29 memo from the Planning Director with the modification to stipulation number four as follows, that the maximum building height shall be 30 feet or 42 feet if the applicant enters into an agreement with the City of Phoenix where the developer makes a single $250,000 contribution to the City of Phoenix Housing Trust Fund to provide improvements and incentive housing development within the five-mile radius of the site.
Second. You have a motion and a second. Any additional comments? Roll call.
Hodge Washington?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Ansari?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
Thank you. We next go to item 94, which is the southwest corner of 15th Avenue and McDowell Road in District 4. We'll open the public hearing. We have, on behalf of the applicant, we have two speakers who are available to speak if necessary. On behalf of the applicant, Brennan Ray, in support and available to speak if necessary, Brent Kleinman. Do either of you wish to speak? Nope. All right. Then I will close the public hearing and turn to Councilwoman Pastor.
Yes. I would first like to open with thanking Circle K for taking the time to meet with the neighbors and hearing the neighbors' concerns. In that process, Circle K agreed to provide some funding to the FQ story regarding gates and speed humps and maybe possibly a space for a mural that they would maintain. So I want to thank Circle K for doing that and participating and understanding the importance of the neighborhood. Plus, we did talk about the architecture and seeing if it could blend in with the historic neighborhood. So I really appreciate that time because I did continue the item. With that, I'd like to make a motion, motion to approve per the January 2nd, 2024 memo from the Planning and Development Director and adopt the related ordinance.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Roll call.
Hodge Washington?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Ansari?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes 8-0.
We next go to item 95, also in District 4. This is the northeast corner of Central Avenue and Indian School Road. We'll open the public hearing. We'll begin with Jeremy Thacker. Oh, no, I'm sorry. We will, we, on this one, we do have presentations. So we will have a 10-minute presentations each side. The applicant will go first and can reserve up to two minutes at the end to rebut. So we'll have the applicant first, followed by the appellant. And we have, believe we have Jason Morris on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize. I, if it's more efficient and in keeping with the standards to let the appellant go first, I'm, I'm fine. We can just respond to the appellant's comments. That may be more efficient.
I will defer to Councilwoman Pastor. I prefer you to go first.
All right. Thank you. I'm gonna give the, we'll give you the full presentation, Mayor, council member.
I just think you, just the basics. You can do the full presentation if you like.
Madam Mayor, members of council, for the record, Benjamin Tate with, with you, Morris Baugh, 2525 East, Arizona, Biltmore Circle, on behalf of the applicant, Pivotal Group. We seem to have some, some issues with the presentation, so, but frankly, I know this case like the back of my hand because I've been working on it since 2019 and truly believe in this project. So this is the northeast corner of Indian School and Central. It's a 15-acre piece of property that's adjacent to Steel Indian School Park. And even prior to the Uptown TOD Plan, but really as it came to fruition in the Uptown TOD Plan, this site has always been envisioned as a gateway to Steel Indian School Park, but also as a gathering place for the Central Corridor. And so in 2019, through Pivotal Group, we brought a project to the Encano Village Planning Committee, to the Planning Commission, ultimately to the City Council for final approval in July of 2019, for that urban mixed-use development that borrowed many of the ideas from the Uptown TOD Plan and some of its predecessors, namely the Phoenix Indian School specific plan. What happened approximately seven months after that was that the world dramatically changed in March of 2020. We were moving full steam ahead with a project or with that project and COVID changed everybody's plans. And over the next three years, we went back to the drawing board numerous times with Pivotal Group and several different consultants to try to find a way to make that original vision still work and to create that gathering place on the Central Corridor and to create that gateway to Steel Indian School Park. And what we came, came up with is the plans that are in front of you today and, and really takes many of the ideas that this project had in 2019 and significantly improves upon them. We had the opportunity over the course of those several years to really look at what worked in the stipulations and what didn't and retool the land use for what works in 2023 that didn't, that does not work now or that, sorry, that worked in 2019 and does not work now. And over the course of multiple designs, we were able to come up with this one, which through the stipulations that you see in front of you, takes the intent of that 2019 plan and, and really improves upon it. And there are a couple of things that I want to point out that we've gone through in this process. So this is a PHO. This is not a zoning case. All we're asking to do is modify some of these stipulations in order to make this project work in 2023. Despite that, we have been through twice as many public hearings as a typical rezoning case. So a typical rezoning case would be your village planning committee, your planning commission, city council. We went to the village twice. We went to the PHO twice. We went to the planning commission and now we're here in front of the city council. It's highly unusual for a project like this, for a PHO to go through this many public hearings and be subjected to this level of scrutiny. And I think what's even more unusual is despite the fact that we have been successful and resoundingly successful at every stage of this public hearing process. We had a recommendation of approval from the Encano Village Planning Committee. We got a recommendation of approval from the planning hearing officer. And most recently, we have a unanimous recommendation of approval from the planning commission. And yet despite that, at each stage of this process, the developer has been willing to commit to additional stipulations and to make additional commitments in, in order to just enhance this project even further. And that's where we are back in front of you today, is that despite this, the unanimous recommendation of approval that we have from the planning commission with the stips as they were presented at the planning commission, we've now committed to three additional stipulations, which are stipulations 25, 26, and 27, and additional modifications to stipulation four to further shape what will ultimately be an incredible project for the Central Corridor. And I think two things. First, that the recommendations of approval that we've gotten at every stage of this process, including the staff recommendation of approval that you have in your staff report, speaks to the incredible merit of what we are asking for, which is relatively small if you look at the grand scheme of what this project is and what it's going to represent for the Central Corridor. And more importantly, that the additional commitments that Pivotal Group has been willing to make despite these successive recommendations of approval at every stage of the planning process illustrate their commitment to taking on what is going to be an incredibly expensive and incredibly complex project to ultimately deliver what is going to be the marquee project for the TOD and for the Central Corridor. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Wonderful. Thank you. And we'll reserve some time in case you need it after the appellant. Thank you for your work on this. And now we will hear from Ken Waters.
Yeah. Point of order, Mayor. The, the presenters get the worst view of what they're presenting with being that far away. I mean, it'd be great if you'd give the presenters ability to see the screen that they're presenting. So luckily, I've got a, a iPad here to follow along, but I've got to coordinate my iPad with that. So anyways, in the planning commission, I'm not on the clock yet. Planning commission lets you sit up there and be really close to the screen and, and look at the monitor of what you're presenting. So you'd get better presentations if you sort of went with the planning commission's protocol, letting the presenters get down there and see the screen they're actually utilizing. So anyways, I've got, let me, let me get my iPad going. Hang on a second. Okay. Slide number one. This is the money shot. I took this three days ago, Sunday morning, December 31st. This is at the corner of Indian School and Central. This is the money shot. This is what has garnered federal legislation, a specific plan back in 1991, a parks master plan in 1993, the Reinvent Phoenix Uptown TOD policy plan. All have spent exorbitant amounts of time, man-hours, hundreds if not thousands of, of man-hours invested in this vision for the park. Now, this is not an island unto itself. Across the street, Petri was surrounded by streets. This is up against the, the park and that's my problem. I have a ton of confidence in Pivotal. I have a ton of confidence in the Joffeys. And, and version 1.0 in 2019, it did the job. This 2.0 PHO reversion, it's radical. How this, the, the PHO process, the whole planning process is broken in the, in the city. But these guys, they put an application in for the PHO process and it's a radical change. The version 1.0 had 50% more open space. Now we're getting, this is a ho-hum application. Oh, we're gonna do some minor tweaks on the stipulations. No, anyways, let me start going through before I, I lose all my time. Okay. Slide number two. This is from Main Street, USA and Walt Disney's Disneyland. Isn't it crazy that Disney's Main Street, USA, a walkable neighborhood with public transit, local shops, and a pedestrian at the same time is something that people are willing to pay for, and yet the concept is at risk of its extinction in America? I want you to envision Farrington Avenue, the gateway into Steel Indian School, our premier park, Phoenix's premier park. Arguably, this, this is it. Let's go to slide three. Farrington Drive is one, less than 1% of what it could be. I put the, the St. Louis Arch gateway there because I think Farrington is the gateway to our premier park. And right now, it, it's in dog doo-doo condition. And what this plan does, that 1.0 did not, but what this plan does, 2.0 totally caves in on our gateway to the park. Zero lot line, back porch stoops are gonna go on Farrington Avenue and every single major plan that's been done over 36 years here. I can't believe I'm it. The 36 years of all this talk and miles of ink in the Arizona Republic about this site, its, its visions, now I'm the only one contesting this site, 2.0. Farrington Avenue is our diamond in the rough. We don't recognize its value, what it could be. I gotta keep up. Okay. This, since this is, since this is all Councilwoman Pastor's district and you guys have all basically bowed out and it's all up to her now, this is her blank canvas. And this is a good thing. On piles of failure, successes are built. Steel Indian School Park is way due for makeover. I would have signed on back in 93 for the master plan for this and all the do, do-good that was done. We sort of played the federal government in making Steel Indian School Park what it is. They were gonna just auction it off the highest bidder, but the, the great city council people back in 90, 88 and 91, they, they put a specific plan in place and they put restraints on Collier. And the federal government in their Public Law 100-9669-6, it's the 100th Congress, so it's Public Law 100-696. You can read it. And the GAO, the inspector general, did a follow-up report on it. They specified there needs to be a specific plan. And Colliers, you can, you can bail out if you don't like the specific plan, but it's gonna be the restraint on this. And now, in 2, in 2019, you guys repealed it. I think it was arguably illegal. Federal legislation said there, there was constraints on this. So anyways, let me keep going. Five minutes. Legacy is a blank canvas. It is what you make it. In District 4, Councilwoman Pastor is gonna have three and a half years, three and a quarter years left. She's got a great legacy. But what's happening with Cressley and this TCP version 2.0, let's go back to 1.0, is just gonna cave in and there's no synergy going on between any of these projects with Cressley, with Pivotal, maybe in, in version 1.0, there was open corridors, yes. Here we go. Inside the gorgeous historic cafeteria tower building, represented, represented, is representative of the tired, dilapidated state of Steel Indian School Park. Let's turn this into a good thing. Steel Indian School Park is due for a makeover. It is deserving of a specific plan. What I'm arguing is, let's not go back to the specific plan of 1991. Councilwoman Pastor, let's put a new specific plan. Let's revisit all this, have the Joffeys, Pivotal, Morris and Tate at the tables, along with a lot of citizens, and do a new specific plan. What's going on with 2.0 is a travesty. This is Farrington. Look at all this room on Farrington. Right now, that's basically what we get. It's 1% of what it could be. I want to go back to this. I included all of the, the task force members on the Phoenix Indian, Indian School specific plan. What my point is, is there's been hundreds, if not thousands, of man-hours involved in the, the guidance of this, and now it just got repealed four year ago, four years ago. Okay, next. Oh, that's a beauty. The basis of the repeal is now nullified with 2.0. Here it is. The, the Uptown TOD policy will address the outstanding goals and issues of the Phoenix Indian School specific plan, and whereas the Phoenix Indian School specific plan has fulfilled its purpose and intent. With 1.0, they honored the view corridors, they honored the open space, they honored the setbacks. Everything was good enough. I didn't challenge it. 2.0, this is, my God. Okay, hang on. Oh, this is the, the federal legislation that specified there would be a specific plan in place to guide the development and then you just repeal it. And, and the basis was the Woo Code is now the driving factor, but in talks with our planning director, Frank talks with our planning director, he has admitted, yes, the Woo Code has done a poor job in pulling out the objectives of the Reinvent Phoenix Uptown TOD policy goals and objectives. So now we're relying on the weakest, it's code. It wasn't even part of the master plan. There we go. A little title at the top, Steel's Most Beautiful Building Hidden in the back there. And the blight, the quasi-blight in wasted spaces, front and center, along Central and Farrington. This is a comparison and contrast. You can see 1.0 on the left and 2.0 on the right. You can see 1.0 on the left and 2.0 on the right. Look at the difference. Look at all the view corridors, look at all the open space, look at all the setbacks, look at how the gateway is protected. It hit all the great plans that were there. And then, four years after the specific plan is repealed, they don't even pretend to try to honor all the previous plans and hopes and dreams for this site. They just put it with a footprint. And look at the open space here. The open space on the right is pretty much dominated by street asphalt. That's your open space, folks. 20%, basically, streets and asphalt. On the left, you had 50% more open space. Okay, let's back up. Here we go. Here's a footprint of it. Look at the footprint of this thing. This footprint is a monstrosity. It, 1.0 was light years better than this. My colleague who had, he started, his clock didn't start for like three minutes until after his. So Mayor and I have some little more leeway here, seeing that Ben's clock didn't even start for three minutes.
He didn't get his PowerPoint at all, though.
What's that?
No, thank you. That was a very, I think, we got the information that we needed, unless anyone has questions. All right. Then, we'll go, we have three in-person speakers in support and two virtual in opposition, and then, the applicant did, or did, does have time to rebut if needed. We'll begin with Wade Kempton, followed by Brent Kleinman.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, my name is Wade Kempton. Our current business address is 4100 South Lindsey Road, Suite 129, Gilbert, Arizona, 85297. I represent the owners of the north property adjacent to the entrance to Steel Indian School Park, which is adjacent to the property referenced in item number 95, all fronting on Central Avenue. Our company has reviewed in detail the proposal by Pivotal Group to modify certain stipulations to the current approved W code T6 HWR zoning. We have met in person with the owners of the property and have discussed their proposal. We appreciate their accommodation of our meeting request. The proposal by Pivotal has changed the original approval to some extent. In discussion with Pivotal, the new proposal intended is to bring substantial retail, restaurants, and an anticipated gathering place for this area of Phoenix. The concept of retail shops and restaurants is a much-desired component to enhance the development vibrancy of this uptown area. Our initial comment to the various stipulations requested in the overall site plan proposed was a desire to build mid-rise instead of high-rise buildings at the entrance to the park as an aesthetically pleasing street cape for us and general Phoenix residents when entering the park. This request would necessitate a change to the proposed site plan by interchanging the mid-rise with the high-rise. However, understanding the negative economics of the current high cost to build high-rise buildings and the benefit of major retail, our company is not now against the current placement of buildings in the overall site plan proposed by Pivotal Group, and we are in support. Further, in the event that Pivotal Group changes the site plan in the future, such as retail and restaurants that are not a material component, our company requests that mid-rise buildings, not high-rises, be built at the park entrance, and that we have opportunity to make comments to the new site plan. So I appreciate your time in allowing me to speak today, and thank you for giving us this opportunity.
Thank you. I understand Brent is actually online, but while we look to find him, let's go to Jeremy Thacker in person.
Jeremy Thacker, 4520 North Second Avenue in Phoenix. I live less than half a mile away from this and the park. I've stood up here and been very unsupportive of many of the developments that have gone up around us, even some from, by Wythe Morris here. This is not the case with this development. Other than the Park Central, I don't know of a better development that's happened on the TOD. This will be the premier development. And I'd like to bring your attention to having objective standards for this. Just a few months ago, you approved the Petrie development, less than 100 feet away to the northwest of this development. They're very similar in the size, almost 16 acres a piece, this is a little more, roughly 1,500 housing units each. Then, we get into some very different aspects. Petrie is going to be four buildings. This is going to be seven. Retail square footage of Petrie was 25,000 square feet. This is almost 80,000. Commercial square feet of Petrie was zero. This is 245,000 square feet of commercial. Open space of Petrie was 5%. This is 20%. Was there a grocery store at Petrie? No. This is a planned grocery store. Ownership options here? Yes. Petrie, no. Senior living here? Yes. Petrie, no. Years of construction? Over 10 for Petrie, less than that here. You all voted to approve Petrie, which is a garbage development, by the way, but that's neither here nor there at this point. This is a great development that's going to benefit our neighborhood tremendously, and is what the Walkable Urban Code is really meant to do. Kenny's complaints, while I agree with, many of them are misguided and pointed at the wrong, the wrong people in this. There's still work to be done on Indian School Park, but I think that happens north of this development along Central, not with this development. This is a great development. Thanks.
We will go next online to Brent, followed by Ed.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the City Council. I am going to echo a lot of what Mr. Thacker just said and share my support for this project. Was parts of the original plan that we passed at the Village Planning Committee in 2019 admirable and something we would like to have seen and envisioned? Of course it is, but 2023 and now 2024 is an entirely different world, and I believe that the project that's been put in front of you all is a project that will provide a landmark for the corner of Central and Indian School, and will bring people to the park and to that community in ways we've never imagined. And I am 100% behind this project and hope you all approve this wholeheartedly, and we get another 8-0 vote today. So thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you. Ed is next, followed by Nick, who will be our final speaker on the item.
Oh, hi. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. This is Ed Hermes. I live at 212 West Montecito Avenue. I can see this development from my front yard, I'm the president of the Carnation Neighborhood Association. We did support this development back in 2019, the upzoning, in large part because of the stipulations we're talking about today. I'm asking today that you table this request to be relieved of the stipulations, so we can have more time to work together, to come up with a consensus, resolution with the community, and especially the Native American community, which deserve to be involved in this process. I want to recognize the land that we're talking about here and its unique history. For 100 years, this land was worked on by the kids who were removed from their families and forced to live on and work this land. 1991, when the school closed, the city did a really good job of working with the Native American community and our community, the Carnation Neighborhood, to put together the Indian School site-specific plan. It was a great resolution to a very difficult history, but recognized and didn't paper over the history here. That's, unfortunately, that's what relieving stipulations might do, that I'm concerned of, is it's going to block these historic, and block the intent of the Phoenix Indian School site-specific plan. We need more time to work with the Native American community specifically. They developed some new stipulations if the developer doesn't want to be bound by these anymore. The developer came to us in the neighborhood in 2019, promised these stipulations, and I think it's fair that they be held to these. And if not, then we come back to the table and really come to a consensus with the community, the Native American community, to have new alternate stipulations. So I'm asking today, the Carnation Neighborhood, on behalf of the Carnation Neighborhood Association, that we table this one today, come back, work with the Native American community and our community, to come up with something better that recognizes the history here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Nick will be our final speaker, although the applicant has some time if needed.
Good afternoon. I'd like to draw the esteemed council's attention to three items recorded in the staff report for the original rezoning request approved in 2019. In item number two, staff has noted, the rezoning request is accompanied by a general plan amendment to repeal the Phoenix Indian School specific plan. Item number seven highlights the need for stipulations two, three, four, and five. This is a quote. "To ensure that the property develops as envisioned to by the specific plan, staff has requested that a one-acre public pedestrian plaza be provided at the intersection of Central Avenue and Indian School Road, and that an 85-foot average, 60-foot minimum view corridor and public pedestrian accessway be located on the site, with the pedestrian plaza view corridor focused on the historic cafeteria tower and on the distant mountain views to the northeast." These are addressed in stipulation numbers two, three, four, and five. And last, item number 10 justifies the inclusion of stipulations six, seven, and eight. Quote, "Furthermore, the plan envisioned an open space amenity at the intersection of Central Avenue and Indian School, and a view corridor bisecting the site for linked access to the park." Item 10 goes on to note, "These requests are addressed in stipulation number six, seven, and eight." Now, the city's already allowed this developer to repeal a carefully sourced recipe for the entire Indian School property. Staff took care to highlight some of the most valuable ingredients with stipulations two through eight before they were lost with the specific plan. Now, we're bearing witness to an attempt to thoroughly adulterate the Indian School specific plan by replacing these last valuable ingredients. If the city of Phoenix fails to hold this developer to the minimal standards that were agreed upon, when the Indian School specific plan was repealed, then this esteemed council will play the pivotal role in corrupting any future development on the site. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Tate, do you have any additional comments?
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm more than happy to answer any questions that may arise as a result of those comments, but otherwise, that's it.
Any additional questions? Close the public hearing. Thank you so much. It's a very exciting corner, and it's exciting to have a world-class partner who's also a local company, so thank you. Councilwoman Pastor.
Yes, I believe I have some videos, or slides, actually. The Midtown. Thank you. I've been meeting with the community for maybe the last year and a half, and I even surprised myself in this whole process. In my tenure, as you look at Midtown, I have done 38 rezoning cases that have been approved, 19 of those have been built, and five more are under construction, and that's Midtown. Then, I move up to Uptown. 25 rezoning cases have been approved, 16 of those have been built, and three more are under construction. So if you look at Midtown and Uptown, you see all the growth that is happening down Central. And this has all happened within my tenure. What I have to say is, from when I first entered to where I am today, I have become an expert in this space and zoning, which I never thought I was going to be as an elected, but I have learned. And throughout the process and my evolution of who I am today from that time when I entered, is I have learned what I need to do in order for projects to be built and way community can have an input and be able to be part of it. If you go to slide three, this was the original project. And it was an ambitious project, but it was a great project to want and dream and have. But times have changed, too, just like times have changed from 1988, from when the property was given, to 1991, where there was exchange, to when, I believe it was 2014, 2013, 2014, where at that point, it was supposed to be a casino. I was running for office at that point, and I was getting hit in 2013, 2014, that I was going to make it a casino, because the property was up in limbo. It went back to the federal government, and what ended up happening is all the agreements and all the work that had gone on, I believe it was 2015, 2016, the land went up for auction. Collier gave it back to the federal government, the federal government, the intertribal, we were hoping that it would go to the tribes, but it didn't, and then, the land went up for auction, and it got bought. So that's a whole new development and no way of looking at it. However, the Najafis, who owned the land, understood all the efforts that went into it, and tried and did a great job in connecting all the elements that we had to do. There is pedestrian-friendly walkways. There is actually three different points now. In the original plan, it was diagonal, but now, we have new, three different ways to enter this property and to be able to utilize the park. There is mixed use. There's everything that the community asked for. I can't give you everything, either can the owners of the property give everything, but pretty much 75% of what the community wanted, it is in this project. I did add several stipulations that we agreed to that enhanced the property, and I think we've come to a great space and time, because Indian School and Central is key. It connects everything. Not only that, it's key because it's connected to Steel Indian Park. Now, I got questioned, and I always had a vision for that space. I met with the Economic Development Director, I met with the Parks Director, I met with the Streets Director, and I met with Planning to discuss Indian Steel and what it's going to do to revitalize that space and get it to the level that we need to get it as this project is moving. We are looking at one of the spaces to bring in a restaurant. We are looking at other activations of what needs to be there. We are looking at additional shade canopies. So I heard the community, and I have worked with the community and worked with the developer to this point. I actually personally haven't, my, Josh has. And so, what I am going to say is that I make the motion to approve per January 3rd, 2024 memo from the Planning and Development Director and adopt the related ordinance.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you. I want to commend the councilwoman for working on this project. It was a long and hard one. I've had the opportunity to work with the Najafi brothers in the past when I was planning director, and even if they were just going to sell it, I still have faith they will make sure the right thing is done on that property. I worked with them on West Wing and Peoria, and they initiated the project and did a lot for that city, and then, turned it over to some additional home builders, and it was a quality project. And so, Councilwoman Pastor, I think you're going to luck out. So I am happy to go along with this motion.
Thank you. And Steel Indian School Park is a gem of our city. I'm jealous of the, up to 600 people who may be able to live. I'm jealous of the, up to 600 people who may be able to live with that amazing location.
More than welcome, Mayor.
Roll call.
Hodge, Washington.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Pastore.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Gaya.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
With that vote, we have enabled or entitled the construction of 758 units of housing at today's council meeting. That is, then we move on to item 96, which is a citizen petition. We'll begin hearing from Mr. Thacker, who presented the petition, and then I'll turn for a motion.
The city charter, which has very few rules for this council, citizen petitions are one of them. It's a single sentence in the city charter that reads, "Any citizen of the city may appear before the council at any regular meeting and present a written petition. Such petition shall be acted upon by the council in the regular course of business within 15 days." I submitted this petition on December 6th. I don't think any of us need to be rocket scientists to figure out the math of 15 days is not today. This citizen petition is in violation of the citizen charter, how this has been handled. Also, I received a response from the city that said they would only look at the one through three of my requested actions, that the other ones were not available. Well, number four was decide whether the instances described above were violations of the charter. If the city council can't decide whether the charter has been violated, who the hell can? I am very confused about this entire process, and this petition asked for clarity only to be, receive more confusion. So, I'm hoping that you individually understand your responsibility and that the charter can't be changed by the council. It has to be changed by a ballot initiative. So, the point of this citizen petition is to get each member of the council to vote on the items and to get your stance on it. But when you remove parts of the petition and say that they're not allowed, like number four, whether these instances have violated the charter, it's just very confusing to me. So, I'm hoping that you guys will step up and do the right thing, and we can have some discussions, and you'll ask questions today, because clearly, it doesn't make sense.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, do you have a motion?
Motion to approve staff's recommendation that the city council authorize the process for handling citizen petitions. Oh, second.
We have a motion and a second.
I didn't finish the motion just because I wasn't sure if...
Okay, we'll continue to recognize that Vice Mayor, sorry.
Apologies. Motion to approve staff's recommendation that the city council authorize the process for handling citizen petitions and the specific requirements to qualify as a citizen petition and post them online.
Second.
Motion and a second. Michael Norton was not with us earlier, but has...
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. The residents of Rogers Ranch have filed two citizens' petitions, each of which has either been kicked down the street and ignored or, you know, completely ignored. We support the request for a formal and structured process for submitting residents' petitions. The requirement is set forth in the charter. It's part of the state constitution. I realize that rules that were passed in 1919 don't necessarily apply well in 2024, but that's exactly the reason that there should be an administrative action taken to formalize the process for citizens' petitions. The requirement is that the city council will react and respond when residents of the city's issues have become so important that they bring them to you, and we expect that you do that as you go forward. Therefore, we support this citizen petition. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pastore.
Yes, I would like clarity on four through seven. As it says, it does not qualify as actions.
Mayor and council, so on four to seven, our determination is, our review is always based on whether the council can take an action. Now, council could certainly direct staff to take an action, but council could not act on deciding, you know, legal opinions on whether violations could be changed in an open meeting.
Okay, but what I heard is that council can direct staff to take action. Am I correct or wrong?
Correct. Mayor and council, if council wanted to direct staff to look further on whether violations have occurred or try to, or have an executive session to discuss this further, then we would be happy to do that.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. That is our final agendized item. We next go to the public comment portion of our meeting, and I will turn to our city attorney to introduce that.
Thank you, Mayor. During citizen comment, members of the public may address the city council for up to three minutes on issues of interest or concern to them. The citizen comment session is limited to 30 minutes. The Arizona Open Meeting Law permits the city council to listen to the comments, but prohibits council members from discussing or acting on the matters presented.
Thank you. We will begin with Aswita, followed by Rihanna.
Hi, my name is Aswita Kode, and today I stand before you, not as a concerned individual, but as someone whose life has been deeply impacted by the growing crisis of climate change. I wanted to share my journey with you, a personal journey that has opened my eyes to the harsh reality of climate change and its devastating effects on our world. As a child, I marveled the beauty of nature, the lush forests, the beautiful rivers, and the majestic wildlife that thrived around me, and I remember spending countless hours outdoors, exploring and connecting with the environment as a child. Back then, the idea of climate change seemed distant and abstract, something that scientists talked about on TV. Little did I know that this looming threat would become an inescapable reality of my life, and as the heat became more and more unavoidable, I became, I began staying inside more and more as a child. And fast forward a couple of years, the signs of climate change were becoming increasingly evident. The parks I began to go to as a child were bare, and the swimming pools were unbearably hot, extreme weather events were more frequent, and the summers were hotter than even before. But it wasn't until I experienced a catastrophic natural disaster firsthand that the gravity of the situation truly hit me. Just a couple of years ago, a devastating wildfire struck out on our annual camping spot due to excessive heat, leaving behind a trail of destruction in a heartbeat, and trees were ripped apart and lives were lost, and the devastation was a wake-up call, a harsh reminder that climate change is not a distant threat, but it's a present danger that affects us all, and this impact extends far beyond natural disasters. Moreover, we must prioritize the voices most affected by climate change, marginalized communities, indigenous peoples, and future generations who will inherit the consequences of our actions today. We must ensure that climate change justice remains at the forefront of our efforts, leaving no one behind in the pursuit of a sustainable future. Majority of Phoenix houses are at risk of burning down, several risk of wildfires in the next year, and there are almost 300,000 houses at risk of being burnt down, which is almost 54% of all property in Phoenix. In conclusion, climate change is not an abstract concept. It's a personal and urgent issue that affects us all. My journey has taught me that we cannot afford to be passive observers, and we must become active advocates for change, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Rihanna is next, followed by Mintra.
I'm Rihanna, and I'm a junior living here in Phoenix. Living in Arizona, I'm no stranger to the extreme intensity of the heat. From simple activities such as walking my dog and playing outdoor sports, the heat seems to take control of every day. But even as these tiny troubles seem so extreme to me, I've realized my privilege and the luxuries that I have, having access to shelter, education, and support against the heat. In 2023, just in Maricopa County, there have been over 500 confirmed deaths due to the extreme heat, and it's time we realize the extremity of this heat crisis is as much, if not more intense, than any natural devastation. Extreme heat is a natural disaster. FEMA has yet to qualify heat as a natural disaster, even though the EPA has reported more than 1,400 deaths caused by the extreme heat compared to the 100-plus deaths due to flooding, which is classified as a natural disaster by FEMA. Although neither disaster's casualties must be undermined, it's clear that extreme heat is a raging and overpowering natural disaster, and FEMA should classify it as one. The mayor has already asked President Biden, but it hasn't worked. Death tolls keep rising. People, human beings, your constituents, keep dying. In June of 2023, one of the hottest recorded summers in history, Sunrise Movement Phoenix launched a petition to push FEMA to declare extreme heat as a natural disaster. Over 1,100-plus people signed the petition, uniting to face the struggle against the heat. And today, I met with Vice Mayor Ansari, and we spoke about writing a letter to President Biden, asking him to declare a climate emergency and classify extreme heat properly. This week, each of you will receive an email asking to meet and discuss signing onto such a letter, and we want your support. Phoenix wants your support. Will you join this fight with us? Thank you.
Thank you. Mintra is next, and our final speaker will be Ashton.
Good afternoon, everyone, and Happy New Year. My name is Mintra Worm, and I'm currently a sophomore living in the Phoenix area, and today I'm here to discuss the basic human right of having a shelter. The pressing need for shelter guarantees in Phoenix, particularly during the unforgiving summer months, cannot be ignored. No one should endure the perilous heat without safe refuge. The relentless heat poses life-threatening risks to our vulnerable population, those experiencing homelessness, the elderly, and the disadvantaged. Every summer, I witness a familiar scene in Phoenix, the elderly and the homeless seeking refuge in public spaces like libraries. It's a poignant reminder of the urgent need for guaranteed shelter. As public places offer more than respite, they become a vital sanctuary for those enduring the scorching temperatures without a home or those who can't afford constant air conditioning. Enforcing shelter guarantees in new legislation is a moral imperative, ensuring a safe, ensuring access to safe havens from extreme temperatures. It's not just a matter of comfort, it's about preserving lives. According to the CDC, extreme heat events are becoming more frequent and intense due to climate change. Phoenix, known for its soaring temperatures, experienced prolonged periods of extreme heat, with temperatures often surpassing 100 degrees Fahrenheit. These extreme conditions significantly elevate the risk of heat-related illnesses, including heat exhaustion, heat stroke, and even death. In 2019 and earlier, the tally of deaths never rose above 200. In 2020 and 2021, it topped 320. Last year, 425 people in the Phoenix Valley died of heat stroke, and 42% of those people were people that were homeless. The number of people dying from heat-related illnesses are increasing, and so are the number of homeless people affected by it. We often don't think that this could be us, think this could be us. However, any one of us today can find ourselves out of our job or our home. We should all care, we should all care and want to build a shelter. It could be something somewhat, or someone we know and love that needs one someday. I implore the city council to heed to this advice and take decisive action by incorporating provisions for shelter guarantees in their legislation. Let us stand united in ensuring no individual in Phoenix faces the blistering heat without a place to seek shelter. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashton will be our final speaker.
So, Phoenix's heat crisis is the first page in a book of trauma and disaster yet to come. It's the first step in a long line of climate disasters that Phoenix will face over the coming decades if we don't improve our action on the climate crisis. Just in the past year, Phoenix's houseless deaths have increased by 50%, and that's just one year, not a decade. Big problems demand big solutions. It demands a Green New Deal, a Green New Deal that is a vision for our future in Phoenix, and it's a plan that has already been incorporated into the Phoenix Climate Action Plan, a plan that has made great progress for Phoenix. Indeed, with weather assistance programs, green transit, and 100% renewable energy that we are on track to meet, we are already facing the crisis head-on. The mayor, the vice mayor, the council as a whole, has made great progress on climate change and all of the issues that we've talked about, but it's only addressed the first step of a Green New Deal, guaranteeing net-zero energy. It hasn't yet guaranteed fighting climate justice, one of the key and big problems of the heat crisis here in Phoenix. We've taken a bold step forward, but we have not adequately yet addressed climate justice, and that's exactly why we're launching a campaign for the new year, to push this council to become more progressive on these key climate justice issues, because it's no longer about fighting climate change, but it's about fighting for climate justice when we still have hundreds of people dying on our streets every single year. We need bold climate justice that takes the opportunity to rebuild our economy that also breaks the chains of inequality, and we want Phoenix to do a couple of things. First is we want a declaration of a heat emergency, something Tucson has already done, and something this council has the power to do as well. We want to make sure that we have a guaranteed shelter for those that are suffering from houselessness during the summers. We want guaranteed job training for fossil fuel workers that lose their jobs when we rip out fossil fuels from the economy. We want a committed goal, goal that a majority of green jobs and green transit will be built in low-income areas in South Phoenix. We want city council members to draft a letter to President Biden, asking him to use the world's wealthiest institution to fight the world's worst crisis and declare a climate emergency once and for all. If we're always on the front page of newspapers, from the New York Times to the Washington Post, Phoenix should be also on those newspapers with its bold solutions, too. We need to push forward to President Biden and the federal government and our local governments as well to declare that we need actual emergency relief from the federal government, because it's no longer a problem that just a local government can solve. And we aren't blindly demanding change. We've been working with the government, we've been working with the vice mayor, we've been working, we've all sent you all emails, we've been working with different sustainability offices in Phoenix, in both Scottsdale and Phoenix, and we're committed to making sure that we will pass more bold climate action in the coming year, and we hope to look forward and work with you all on that. Thank you.
Thank you. We are adjourned. We appreciate your support today and always, and we really want to go back and thank all of you. Many of you aren't here today, but those of you that were able to be with us, thank you for the role you played.